I see that it has become 6:30, so I would like to call to order the school committee meeting for Thursday, March 11th. Welcome, everybody. So we are going to get right into our agenda. So I would like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the school choice program for the school year 2021-2022.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Kathleen is a yes. Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So let me just, so the public can get some general information as well. The school choice program, as you all know, has been pretty successful for us through the years. Starting in 2017 through now, 2021, we've been at it for five years. And I think you have numbers that you can see in front of you. In this particular chart, it breaks it down. If you go all the way to the right, you'll see how many students are at each of the grades according to school. So you have eight kindergartners at the JCS, seven first graders, six second graders, twelve third graders, and so on. So at the bottom, you'll see across that the first year we started this program, we had 52 students, and we are now at 168 students. And some of these students have literally been with us since kindergarten. And then now, you know, five years later, going to, you know, I look at the fifth grade and then middle school, because every year, students, and there is some in and out, but in general, we've done pretty well. The the other part that I think is really important is that when this comes funding, as you know, so going on average from the beginning of this, just under $300,000 to approaching over $1 million in the current year and projected to be more than that. And then I'm scrolling down, scrolling back up to the easier chart to read, which is just the number of students by that particular grade. So in K1, 2, and 3, you're combining the two elementary schools. Our recommendation is to look at the school choice program for next year, slightly different. We're recommending lowering the numbers in K through 5 at five slots only. Now, that doesn't mean that someone who has a sibling can't still come and be number six. It's just new, non-family connected has been the approach we've always taken. And then in 6 through 10, it would be unlimited. That is the general recommendation. We are going to see a shift this year in school choice. That is the prediction statewide. In other words, we're going to see situations where people are going to leave in a probably higher number than we've seen. We typically see five to eight. We may, right off the bat, we lose, we're graduating nine, which is our biggest number yet. And so that's nine students right off the bat. And then there's that shift of five to eight we've normally had. And the prediction statewide is that we're going to see a lot of shifting. So that could be positive and negative for us, where we kind of only go up a few seats this year. Or we could see all of the seats coming in. And we'll start to know a little bit about that as soon as you take a vote. And if it's my recommendation, we're slated to open, applications will be posted beginning March 15th, which would be Monday on our district website. And we'd start to roll acceptance on the 22nd and open until September 1st, as we typically do. And the reason for those shifts is that public education during this COVID situation has been very different. We've lost 36,000 students to private schools and other institutions that we haven't had in the past. It's the biggest loss of public school children in quite a long time. Proportionally, Prop 2 and 1/2 in 1982 is the last time that we'd seen this type of a shift. We are typically only losing in public education about $3,600, 3,600 students a year. Take, give or take a couple hundred every year. So the predictions are that this could be a lot of movement, just like we saw with COVID, for example. Parents that have left that want to come back, or parents who have said, nope, I'm going the other way, and parents who are just going to stay. So it's going to be very interesting to see how school choice plays in that selection process for families. I will tell you that we are already getting inundated with phone calls.
Phone calls, of phone calls of people who wanted school choice in?
That is correct. Yep. It's
And what has sort of, what are you noticing as a trend for those calls, Joe?
It's predominantly for us, positive, and it's predominantly for us in the earlier grades. It's always, it's always been for us, the earlier grades. And then we, pretty much the students stay. We do see a shift in eighth grade, just like we do with kids going back to their own high school, if you will. But we also have the opposite of students who come to us. So, but that shift is always more, the last few years, if you take a look at the numbers, you'll see that the shift has really been at the middle school level, where the numbers have gone up to 16, 17, 18, and in each of the classes. That has to do with growth. So you get the, you know, you get the 11 kids coming from fifth grade into sixth grade, and then there's another six or seven kids that join us in middle school. It's been a very popular area as well.
So Joe, if you feel like you're getting a lot of calls for the elementary age groups, are we comfortable capping it at five, then?
Well, there's a couple of different things, right? Because we don't know the situation of our current students that may choose to stay out for another year, may not come back, as you know. That shift is important. So by starting this early in the process, we don't have to pass in our information to the state until June 1st by law, your vote. So if we start to see some shifts, and we're starting to see some growth, then we still got it till then. And usually, it's very important, it's very, there's a lot of interest early on. And then there's a lull, and then we pick up again in the summertime. So that's the reason why I'm being conservative. And you also have to think about things like our class sizes, where they currently are, what the projections are, and then what would the school choice impact on that be? So those are the scenarios that we use to make our projections every year.
Can I ask a clarifying question? If we notice that I, you know, sort of capping it at five is perhaps going to be a hindrance because everything works out, so we would come back and have an open session again and potentially have the option to reconsider that number?
Yes, and we typically don't pass in our paperwork until May to the state. So if we can, the other part, and you can always change it, you can pass it in and change as long as they have it by June 1st. The other issue is that, like this current school year, we had a lot of kindergarten kids, and one of the issues there for us was siblings. We just had a lot of success. So the actual new kids were single-digit numbers. It was the siblings that took us for a loop, because we were capping at 10 seats, and we ended up with 15 because of the sibling groups, because that's always been, I mean, why accept one kid and create a division within a family? To me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I know that sometimes you do that at the secondary level, but, you know, somebody goes to a private high school, while somebody's in a public middle school, or all-boys school, and all-girls school, that type of thing. But you typically don't see it at this, at the early grade levels.
So this is a public hearing, so if there are any questions or comments from those who are in attendance tonight, you could put them into the chat box or the Q and A. What would be better, Jen?
I think it's fine.
The Q and A is usually easier, but whatever works.
I am not seeing any. I don't know if anybody else has any comments, any questions?
No.
I just want to make one comment. You know, I think it's worth noting that because of school choice, you know, the district is where it is right now. You know, with a lot of our technology has come from the school choice money, a lot of our one-to-one stuff, you know, and I obviously, I credit Karen and her team, but, you know, predominantly, the funding came from a lot of the school choice stuff. So I'm very much in favor of the program. You know, I kind of look forward to seeing it every year and hoping the numbers go up and up, because, I mean, we have a good product in Norton, and that's a tribute to our staff, our administration, and our teachers. So that's where I'm coming from. I fully support it, 100%.
Jen? I am seeing no additional questions, no additional comments. So I would like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the school choice program for the school year 2021-2022.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor? Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Second motion would be to accept the superintendent's recommendation of the five seats in K through five, and unlimited seats in grades 6 through 10, with a closing date of September 1st.
That's a lot of information that I didn't write down.
I'll say it again and enter into the record.
You say it, and I'll just sort of say what he said.
Motion to, a motion to accept the school choice program for the 2021-22 school year with the following seats available: K through 5 of five seats per grade, not counting siblings, and grades 6 to, 6 through 10 unlimited, not counting siblings.
Thank you. So is there a motion to approve the school choice program as presented by Dr. Byetta with the student seat as?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you for that. We will ask, or I will ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the FY 2022 school budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Dr. Byetta?
Thank you. I'm going to quickly go back and forth. I think Matt is on the call as well, and I know he loves this stuff. This is our third public meeting to discuss the budget, and it is the normal protocol for us to have a public hearing within this process. The general sense is that today, off the presses, came everything to do with the final booklet. I'll provide you with that in a second. I believe that Matt has that ready to go. I'm just going to give you the general, and then he'll break it down a little bit more. It has not changed since its last two meetings, and then the internal multiple meetings. It is a request for $1,722,545 increase, or 5.55% for a total school budget request of $32,759,384. Matt, I don't know if you want to share your screen with the booklet, or if you want me to do it, I'm happy to do it. Can't hear you, so I'm going to guess that I'm doing it. I'll go through, it's a 30-page document, as you all know, in terms of how we do it. And again, I'm going to share the screen. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Matt's already shared it, Joe.
Okay. So you'll see with basically a traditional slogan that we've had for many years around the issue of, I'm having a hard time with the computer here. Hold on for a second. Okay. With our excellence, tradition, and pride slogan that we've had, I'm just scrolling down, we have our pictures that we always like to use with our students, and the table of contents is broken down into six sections. There's my budget letter, and then the summary, the staffing changes, the other funding sources that we're using, and then the mandates in general education. The letter this year is a continuation of really taking a look at responding to COVID and the pandemic, and trying to prioritize how to look at areas where we believe there's going to be some significant needs and supports as we come back to school in a more traditional fashion. Where I outline in the cover letter, the very basics of the increases, as I just read to you earlier, the number of programs and general education staff increases of 8.52 positions, of which 2.32 is supported by school choice funds and the federal ESAA grant that you'll see on an upcoming page. We are also recommending adding a very specific general education reading specialist position for the district as a way to support our students as we're coming back. We have other reading and literacy specialists in our district, but we really feel that this is an area where we're going to have to target students. And we will also be putting together some before and after-school programming for this coming year as well. The concern that we all have is around the stress and the trauma that students have been dealing with because of the pandemic. And so in supporting that, what we want to do for our students is to try to take a look at every individual student this summer by gathering some information and figuring out our best approach to students that are struggling and students that are accelerating, and how to best provide our programs. We are also recommending, for the first time in a while, a reduction in fees by setting the transportation fees at $250 instead of $350, and setting the athletic fees at $250 instead of $350. That's the letter. The budget request summary is what you just saw earlier, and it shows the breakdown. And then the staffing changes are outlined. Oh, this is on the side. I apologize, it should be, should be going the other way. I don't know why that's coming out that way, as the rest of the page is going to do that too. Yeah, I guess so. Sorry about that. That should have been printed going the other way. But just if you, if you just go with me for a second, what we are particularly saying is between mandated positions, we have the startup of the LGN in the high school, having two special education programs for a best program at the LGN and a LBC language-based program at the high school. Those are also, those and other programs supported by another district-wide school psychologist, an occupational therapist, a BCBA, making us have two BCBAs based upon the number of cases, increasing the music position at the high school, one of them from .8 to 1.0, and bring, adding the second digital instructional specialist, digital learning specialist to the district, making it two. As you know, we did the one as a response to COVID. And then taking our instructional technology staff and adding more time to their schedules so that they can be in classrooms. And then lastly, the reading position. And again, $150,800 coming from federal funds. This page, and I apologize, it's sideways. Again, breaks down the $1.7 million in school choice that we're using. That's a carryover, $800,000, $900,000 in new. And then it pays for all of our leases, and then our supplies and materials, and those staffings, we noted in the prior page for each of the schools, increases under technology. The side of that is the, is everything to do with our revolving accounts. You'll see that we have school lunch facilities revolving, transportation, parking fees, athletic tuition, club fees, and the Little Lancers. We are not, we are recommending that the Little Lancers preschool tuition be frozen at the pre-COVID fee charge. And we'll put that out more specifically for parents and what that means. And then the only real new grant that's underneath the grant section is the ESAA 2 for $721,000, of which all of that is part of this, is part of this budget. A CIRCA breaker that's presented at 60%, bringing in $833,000 reimbursement, and for a total revolving of accounts of $5.4 million. And all of this is sideways as well. I'm not going to go through each. I'm going to instead try to see if I can talk in general sense for you. Each of the line items of our budget, as you all know, the school committee knows, so that the public knows, we've been trying to make, Matt and I have been trying to make corrections to those line items, because things were in the wrong place. And so every year, we've tried to make corrections to that. And except this year, there's also notations that note that. We've also made sure that the public sees the number of situations that we got into this year of added staff, paraprofessionals, teachers, and all of that, that we've had to add, not only respond to COVID, but specialized programming and needs of students, and so on and so forth. All of the staff that we added in general education for COVID this year are all out of the budget for next year. So if we hired someone to be a DLA teacher for a grade, that position is not in our operating budget for next year. So this is a big situation in talk. We don't really know anything for the fall, except that we're all channeling that we're in some type of a normalcy, that people are vaccinated, and we may be wearing masks, we may be doing all kinds of things, but that we have five days a week of schooling and a traditional, traditional public education process. The other part of it is, Mike Unitz and I have not really spoken specific yet around the budgets, but we are seeing town-wide some savings this year that should be beneficial. One of them is that in the month of May, we will not see a health benefit charged to employees and to the town, saving a significant six-figure free cash number for July 1st, that I'm sure we're all going to be having discussions about how to utilize those funds in the fall town meeting as a way, because it's really a funding that could be very beneficial, depending on where we all are with the budget. If the budget comes in at less than the 5.55 request, then Matt and I will come back to you with specifics on the best way to, best way to do that. Typically, for us, it's been materials and supplies that have taken a hit, you know, in terms of pushing those off until the fall. You know, we could potentially do some of that. My concern is that, as you know, every year, that's the first one to go, and every year, we cut more and more into it. The only other thing that I think is really, really important is the concerns that we all have around the mandated education with attention to the students coming back to school, and where are we really with some of our students? In terms of the psychology, the psychology, if you will, the mental health, as we say in the traditional world, our social, emotional component of how we want to do that. And that's going to be a really important part of the work that administrators and our staff is going to be participating in this summer. We really need to have some really solid pre-planning, much of it, if you will, educational guesses, but trying to prevent, or trying to be more proactive than reactive, so that we're not just placing students into situations where they're going into a specialized classroom, or they're going to have to go out of district. And we all know that in out-of-district costs, that could be pretty significant. This year, we have had some hiccups in that line item, and we've also had some really good surprises, if you will. Specifically, if someone moves out of town, that's usually where we see somebody ages out, that's typically where we see any type of a savings. That's what I got for you. Oh, by the way, this is on the district webpage in the business office section, and I believe it's being released under my section as well. So that you go right in there. You can go right there, you can print it out. If anybody needs a hard copy, you can call my office, and I'm happy to print a copy out for you, and you can come and pick it up if that's what you want to do. But most of it's online, you can make your own notes off of it. It is page-numbered as well, so it makes it easier to read.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anybody who is on this Zoom, anybody in attendance has any questions, you can certainly put those into the Q and A. We've had multiple conversations about this budget. I personally don't have any additional questions or comments. I'm not sure if anybody else does. Dinesh?
I have a question, actually, and it's not on the budget, it's more on the procedure. We're slated to vote tonight. Didn't, did we not vote on this last week? Are we always, we always vote twice?
Yeah, you do. You have to vote after the public hearing, because the public hearing is the place where there could be a change to your actual budget.
Okay, cool.
And sometimes there is, and sometimes there isn't. Typically, someone might bring something up, and all of a sudden, the committee has a discussion, says, you know what, we should add $25,000 for that, we should add 100, you know, and that's why it's the public hearing process, and we try to get it done before it gets printed to the town. Only other thing that for the public record, considering the public hearing, are we're three of our, well, the teachers and the powers are now really coming together as one union, we've been negotiating with them, but those two associations coming together as once, I'll just say that association, on the 18th, the custodials have a tentative agreement for you to sign off on. I'm in negotiations with the administrative assistants, and then non-union personnel. So we're in a pretty good place, and I just publicly want to thank them for meeting us halfway in these difficult fiscal times, and at the same time, trying to do what we can to treat our employees fairly during these difficult fiscal times.
Thank you for mentioning that, Joe. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, and seeing none from those in attendance, I would like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2022 school budget.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor? Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So I would like to ask for a motion to vote on the FY 2022 school budget as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thanks, Matt, for your work on that. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, we'll make sure that the screen is proper for the posting on the website. Trust me, not, one of those things, you run it through, and you think you have it right, and you're looking at it right, and then you go to present it, and it's going sideways.
If that's the worst thing that happens to us, we're all doing okay, Joe.
Yeah, I agree. Any other business?
Just real quickly, that we did announce, as I was commenting last Thursday, the return date for the grades 6 to 8, as March 29th, we're preparing for that. The Labor Management Committee will be meeting Monday and having further discussions about grades 9 through 12. As the committee knows, but just for the public to know, some of the biggest issues dealing with the high school has everything to do with the three feet within the classroom that is just more difficult for us to put together. And one of the things we're trying to make sure doesn't happen is students just changing their classes, therefore, and a negative impact to students. So a lot of work going on in the background. The other thing is, I've announced a coffee hour for next Tuesday, the 16th, at 6:00 PM, with all families that are currently in DLA, and at 7 o'clock with all hybrid parents. And of course, you can attend any of them or both of them, it's fine. I also want to squish the rumor that if you are in DLA, that you're being forced to come back to school, that is a negative, not truthful. A DLA parent, under the commissioner's guide, may remain DLA for the remainder of this school year. Of course, as superintendent, I'm always going to push you to come back to school, but that is a parental choice to stay. The more difficult is that there is no hybrid model. So if you want to go from your hybrid, which now forces you to go, if you will, into full return, going to DLA is significantly problematic in grade 6 to 12 because of how the courses work. So for some of the parents out there that have communicated with me concerning issues such as, you know, they have an autoimmune, a significant autoimmune disease, an issue within their own family, and they're worried because they've heard comments that, you know, from the newspapers and all of that, that you're forced to come back, that is not accurate. If you are currently a DLA family and you want to maintain DLA, you may do so for the remainder of the academic year.
But if you are a hybrid family and want to go into a DLA model, that would be more difficult.
Significantly problematic for a couple of different reasons. The first one is that students in those secondary levels are taking courses, specifically at the high school, that creating transcripts that are important to college expectations and graduation. And, for example, some of those courses just don't align. Going from being in front of somebody two days a week, plus the online Monday, to fully online is problematic, but of course, we will do our best to work with families. We've also announced, and I think it's important to know, that if you're coming back as a DLA parent, we're asking you, we're not asking you, we're telling you that it starts on the day that DLA start, that full remote, full in-person starts. So if you're a grade K through 5, and you're coming from DLA to K to 5, you start on the 23rd, and then there's dates four weeks out from that. So there'll only be two other opportunities to come back in grades K to 8. And at the high school, it'll probably only be one opportunity. in grades K to eight. And at the high school, it'll probably only be one opportunity. Um, and the reason for that is the tran- is the transition. Um, it's not just, you know, flip a switch and you come back. It's, there's a lot of things that have to go into it, especially in the uh in the older grades. Um, and students coming from not being with their peers in the traditional sense, having to come into a classroom. So that's the process that we're using.
So I think um we should just put it out there. If anybody has a question, um, sort of a an individual sort of family concern or um really trying to think this through for individuals, um individual families, please just reach out, use Let's Talk. Um, and you can reach out and and speak directly. I think that, you know, certainly we want to support all of our families. Um, so. Any additional comments?
None for me. Thank you.
Um, well, um, it looks like I don't see any questions, no comments. I think we are all good. So um, thanks, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn our school committee meeting for Thursday, March eleventh?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thanks, everybody. Have a nice night.
Night, guys.
All right.